Thank you again for attending tonight's Rock County Civics Academy program. Our ability to provide these presentations is solely dependent upon the financial support we receive from our sponsors and you, our faithful listeners. Our presenting sponsor is Havana Coffee on Milton Avenue in Janesville. This program would not be possible without the ongoing support of the Italian House and Big Radio, WCLO, WJBL. Supporters include Ragnar LTD and Ragnar Software, the John Westwall family, Dan Pushick's Janesville News Report, American Awards and Promotions, Stockman Property Development, LLC, Tim Lindau, Nowland Law. If you believe in our mission, we welcome your financial support. Materials explaining our mission and financial support opportunities are available at the registration desk or in your chair, or by visiting our website, commonsenserockcounty.org. And now, presented to our moderator, Rich Bruber.
Thank you, Paul, and good evening. Welcome. It's a pleasure to have you join us tonight, and I'd like to thank the panel for joining us tonight. Our intent is to run about an hour and 15 minutes with a question and answer session, then we will shift to questions out of the audience. We're going to give you a break in the middle of it, at roughly the 45-minute mark, so you can stretch your legs and get a drink of water or whatever. So with that in mind, we've gone over the rules prior to the broadcast, and everybody is comfortable with that, hopefully, and let's begin with the questions. I'd like to do this, though, this would not be possible, quite honestly, without the cooperation and frankly, the incredible assistance we've had from the Milton Chamber of Commerce. John Cruzan is the president of the board of directors of the Milton Chamber of Commerce. John, come on over and say a couple of words, if you would.
Welcome, everyone. Milton Chamber has sponsored, been very involved in a candidate forum for many years in the community. I've been very involved in that myself, helping with those and sometimes participating in them, and we're very happy to do it. And we're also very pleased to partner with Rock County Civics Academy because they help with technical pieces that we were challenged to be able to do ourselves. I have known Richard Bruber, I have known Dwayne Severson, I have known some of the others of the people involved with that academy for years and years and years and work with them, and have nothing but positive things to say about all of that. So I think it's a great partnership. It brings two entities to bear, to make the work easier for all of us, and we're very happy this is happening.
Thank you, John. With that, let's begin the questions. As we mentioned in the procedural note that I sent to each of you, we'll do this in alphabetical order, and we'll start with, I guess, the letter H for the question number one, and then we'll run our way through the alphabet and then repeat a few times. If I get mixed up, please feel free to tell me. I'm good at taking directions, if nothing else. Let's start with you, if we could, Dan Hibbert. What motivated you to run for the school board?
Well, Rich, thanks for having me. Thank you to the Rock County Civics Academy and Chamber of Commerce. What motivated me to run was looking at my property taxes last year. You know, I'm a father, I'm a husband of four kids, and I moved to Milton six years ago because this was the one place in southeastern Wisconsin, from Beaver Dam to the Wisconsin-Illinois border, and from Madison to Lake Michigan, that my wife and I found that we could afford. And so when I pulled up my tax statement last year, I saw it was pretty high. This year it was about $3,900. I live in a really modest home, and I'm wondering how we can keep taxing us at the rate that we are, with the levy limits that they are, and have this a sustainable thing for our community. And not just for me and my family, but for folks on a fixed income, the elderly, people who are in poverty. I'm finding this is an unsustainable way to maintain some academic standards that are pretty lacking.
Thank you very much. Jen Johns, what motivated you to run for school board?
Yeah, so I really just want to serve because I love education, and I believe as a group, I'm currently on the school board as well, I believe that putting our students first and working together, we can make the district one of the best in the state. And I actually really enjoy being a part of an organization that is positive, and I think the district is very, very positive. And I think that, again, I am just one vote, but I think collectively, we're doing great things, and I just want to be a part of it.
Thank you, Jen. Joe Martin, same question. What motivated you to run for the Milton School Board?
Thank you, Rich, and Duane, and the rest of the Civics Academy. It's a pleasure to be here tonight and share some thoughts with folks. I guess my desire to run for board is parallel with what it was originally. I've been fortunate to serve a couple of terms on the school board, and it's just driven by a love of public education and kids, and that's kind of joined at the hip with serving the community. I'm a lifer. I went to school in this town, and so did several generations of my family, so felt like a way to give back is to get involved and to, once I got on the board, learned about the real crucial partnership that the community and the school district engages in, to deliver everything we can for the kids in our community.
Thank you, Joe. Annette Smith, your motivation for running for the school board?
So first, I'll echo the thank you for having us here. And my motivation is community. It takes people to have a healthy community, and Milton is known for having high-quality education, high-quality opportunities, and I think it's important to be engaged in the organizations that keep that happening in our community. And so I'm running for school board to help maintain and support that continued quality of our public schools, and to make sure that that quality is available for all students.
Thank you. The next question will begin with you, Jen, if we could. Communication to district residents is critical if the school board is to fulfill its mission. What do you do to actively listen and then act on comments that you receive from the public?
So I think our communications director at the district does a wonderful job in communicating with not only the community, but our families and our students. And again, I think communication is a key element to what we do here at the district. But I also am a firm believer that the board is one voice, and I do think that, again, when community members reach out to board members, we collectively, again, need to speak in one voice, and so I think that's really important, and so that is how I have taken my role as it relates to communication, is that we function as one group, and we actually work through Joe as our president to communicate one message.
Thank you, Jen. Joe Martin, communication to district residents is crucial. What do you do to listen and act on comments from the general public?
Well, thank you, Rich. So one of the very key pieces of that, and you mentioned in the question, is listen. We get an opportunity to do that in a number of different places. Certainly, as a current board member, our contact information is out there, and we get folks that reach out and ask us about an issue that's important to them, and so the first way you acknowledge that is you listen. It's quite obvious, when you first start serving on the board, that you can't fix everyone's issue, but not that you're supposed to, but you do need to listen. And so I very proactively, my parents taught me way back when, you know, that you have one mouth and two ears. That means you listen twice as much as you talk, and I try to live by that and listen to folks and share their concerns, and just to be present in all the circles that all of us live in, and people are interested in, and what they're passionate about.
Thanks, Joe. Annette Smith, communication to district residents is crucial. What will you do to listen and act on those comments from the public?
I would echo many of the things that have already been said here, but I would add that you are involved in other spaces also, and so you listen to people in those spaces as well. So I'm involved with the Public Library, the Milton House, Parks and Rec, and different places. So you put yourself in places where you hear different opinions, and you can listen to those respectfully, you can listen to those and build trust by doing exactly what Joe said, right? Two ears, one mouth. You've listened to that, you bring it back to the group, you have honest, engaged conversations with all of the different people, and then you try to find solutions that, again, you're not going to, you can't solve everything, but try to come to things that at least people can understand and have some respect for.
Thank you. Dan, communication to district residents is crucial. What will you do to listen and act on those comments from the public?
Yeah, I think everyone has really hit on the main points here. We're not investigators. We want to be school board members, and if you've got an issue, I'm happy to listen to it, and then I'm going to ask you, have you talked to the principal? Have you talked to the superintendent? Have you talked to Joe? And follow that chain so we can get a good response for you. But I will say, I'm going to help make sure people get good answers to their questions, so.
Thank you. Next question, round of questions, we'll start with you, Joe, if we could. Operational referendums seem to be the wave in all school districts across the state, and it's not uncommon here in the school district of Milton. What's your opinion on the use of them, and how do you justify them to the elected?
Yeah, thank you. That's part of my ongoing education in the school board world is financial acumen, and there's a unique system in place that funds school districts. We don't have time and space tonight to get into what creates the shortfalls, et cetera. Operational referendums have become a bit more of a norm, and I think that's, you can draw the easy conclusion that if everybody's doing it, it's a necessity, right? It's a function of what all of us, as public school districts, are sort of dealing with relative to the funding from our state piece of the puzzle and our local component. It doesn't matter if I like them or not, if we're going to have a balanced budget and continue to provide the services and opportunities for our kids, it's going to necessitate, occasionally, going to our community to lobby our case and show the justification for why we need their support.
Thank you, Joe. Annette Smith, operational referendums have become a steady diet across the state for school districts, and we're no exception. What's your opinion on using them to cover budget shortfalls, and how do you keep the community informed?
So I think operational referendums are one of the tools that we have in our tool chest of ways to fund schools in our state, and you just answered that question right there by saying that they're common across the state because there aren't many other ways to raise the money needed to keep the district operating the way it is now. And so you have to look at what are our options, you have to listen to what people, you know, care about, but sometimes it might be our only choice. And I can't say it is or isn't because I'm not involved in the board yet, but it's the kind of thing where you have it in your tool chest and you use it when you have to.
Thank you. Dan Hibbert, operational referendums are becoming a steady occurrence across the state, and what's your opinion on the use of them, and how do you justify them to the public?
Yeah, they should only be used as a last resort. Districts have to, including ours. We need to take a look very carefully and see where we can save money and cut costs. Unfortunately, right now, our ratios for educators to administrative staff is almost equal, which means you're basically having one administrator for every teacher. I don't think that's a sustainable model, and if we go to another operational referendum, I know one was being discussed last December for about $700,000. I think we first need to look at where we can cut costs.
Thank you. Jen Johns, operational referendums are a mainstay across the state and becoming something we are paying attention to here. What's your opinion on their use, and how do you justify them to the public?
Yeah, I think while we can all agree that a balanced budget, no matter if it's in our own homes or if it's in our place of employment, but a balanced budget is important, and I think as a board member, you need to find that balance. You need to figure out and understand both the district's needs, and then, of course, have the taxpayers in mind. I think we have to be cautious as a district with our resources, certainly, but let's face it, the school funding model is broken, and it has been for years, and that is why so many districts throughout the state are struggling financially. And so at some point, we're not going to be the only district that may have to, again, ask for additional funding because the state funding model is just simply broken.
Thanks, Jen. This next question round, we will start with you, Annette. What life skills do you believe are crucial to your success as a member of the Milton School Board?
Oh, I thought you were going to go with life skills for students, so my brain was going a different direction, and you just curved a different way. My life skills, I think 30-plus years in education, technology, and private industry have taught me how to be a problem solver, how to work collaboratively with people, how to really listen and look for solutions that might be a little bit different, because when you work in IT, you have to think in some different ways. It's not always a straight path, it might go in many different directions before you get to that solution that works for the most people and for the best interest of students. I think, you know, listening, the ability to solve problems, and a lot of experience in this field.
Thank you, Annette. Dan Hibbert, what life skills do you believe you possess that are crucial to your success as a member of the school board?
I think you just hit the big one right there. It's listening, and listening to all voices. In my role, I'm an attorney by trade, but I work for the state legislature, and we get folks in the office all the time with very different agendas, and, you know, even though I might not agree with someone politically all the time, it's really good to listen to their point of view and to see how we can adjust a piece of legislation to meet their needs. So, yeah, listening and collaboration are pretty key.
Thanks, Dan. Jen Johns, what life skills do you believe are crucial for you to, for your success as a member of the Milton School Board?
Yeah, so my role as a town administrator years ago for the town of Fulton, I worked through tax levies, mill rates, shared revenue, and then all of that kind of local government experience really brings some insight for me when I sit at the board table. I also worked at UW Rock County. I was leading their foundation, and again, so I was entrenched in education for over five years, and I do have a real passion for students. And then I've been at Mercy Health as the development director for the foundation and the director of community development, and in that role, I volunteer so much, and actually, the vast majority of my career, I have both reported to a board of directors and also served as a board member. I have been on probably more than 15 nonprofit boards, and again, I bring a lot of different, I guess, insight and also understanding.
Thanks, Jen. Joe Martin, what life skills do you believe you possess that are critical to your success as a member of the Milton School Board?
A couple of things come to mind. Communication, I think most folks have indicated that, and that's a very vital asset, if you will, as a board member. I've done a number of leadership roles and been thrust into some public speaking roles and stuff, so I think I'm an effective communicator verbally, and as I mentioned before, the reciprocal of that is, of course, to listen, and that's the other piece of communication. So I bring that, and the second thing, I think I've had some life history that has sort of honed for me, is teamwork. I'm a family business owner, 120-year-old family business that I lead, if you will, but there's family and non-family members involved, and that translates into my role as a board member as part of a team, and the teamwork is essential, especially in the board world. One board member can do very little, seven board members can do wonderful things.
Thank you. Annette Smith.
So I started the last one, so if you want to go back to Dan, I'll lob it that way.
You know, it's amazing how the teacher in her comes out. Let's start this with Jen, if we could, with Dan. Okay, with Dan. Dan, would you name three areas that you believe your school district has done a respectable to good job in the last two years?
I'm sorry, I can't even think of one.
Let's move on to Jen. Can you name, from your perspective, three areas that you believe the district has done a respectable, good job in the last two years?
Yes, absolutely. So again, I think the district communicates well. I really do think that, again, we are sharing our message, not only with our students and their family, but we're also sharing our message with the community. I think the district also does a wonderful reputation of obtaining and retaining very high-quality staff members. I think, again, the employees here at the school district of Milton are far above, again, many of the other districts, and again, we're a sought-after district, so I think, again, our reputation is wonderful, and we're doing a great job as it relates to, again, keeping staff that's engaged and motivated, and the culture here is wonderful. And I think also what we do is we try to continually balance our spending, and I just think, again, we do a great job, very, very low income as it relates to per student that we get here, and yet we do a lot with what we have financially.
Thanks, Jen. Joe Martin, name three areas your district has done a respectable to good job in the last two years?
Easy question, Rich. I'm incredibly proud of the job that our district does. The first thing I would point to is achievement. You know, it's one of the three pillars of our vision statement for the district, and there's a number of ways to measure that, but the achievement that our kids attain, whether it's academic or outside the classroom things, is exemplary and compares with any peer group we can find, and compares very favorably with state groups and national groups, et cetera. Secondarily, I would say that we have done very well with financial management. We have very limited resources, particularly compared to our neighbors, and we've been able to keep offering the kinds of opportunities for our kids to attain that achievement that we're all very proud of. And the third piece, I would say, is we make a big effort, and I think we're reasonably good at communicating everything that we need, want, and expect from our community folks.
Thanks, Joe. Annette Smith, name three areas that you believe the district has done a good or respectable job in the last two years?
Well, I would say student success. If you read the Milton paper, if you follow the school board meetings, if you, our students are doing great things, and part of that success comes out of the opportunities that this district has been able to provide to our students with such limited funding. I mean, our district still has foreign languages, and art, and music, and, you know, choir, and counselors, and all of these services that help our students to be successful. And I think that's really impressive and something to celebrate, considering what we have for our financial limitations. And I also think our community has a lot to be proud of. When you look around our district, when you look at how well we've maintained and managed our buildings, and our infrastructure, and our staffing, we have a lot to be proud of.
Thank you. This next round of questions, we will begin with you, Jen.
All right.
Name one area where the district has not necessarily done a respectable job, and what would you do to have corrected it?
I guess there's always room for improvement regarding our DPI scores, and so, again, not that they're bad, but there's always room for improvement with, again, the report card scoring, and I can tell you that the district is taking fantastic measures to improve those scores. We want to be at exceeding expectations in all of our areas, and we've implemented new screening, new screeners. We have really tried, again, to make sure that we are, it's continuous improvement, I guess, as it relates to the report card scores. So I think that, again, that's an area in which we should continue to strive.
Thank you. Joe Martin, name an area where the district has not necessarily done a great job, a respectable job, and what would you do to change it or improve upon that area?
So I would skew the question just a little bit, because I'll tell you that we've done a respectable job in every area that I can think of. Some of the areas that would come to mind where we would like to be able to do more are addressing the gaps that COVID dealt us. It's called a learning gap, I guess, in the trades for the education professionals, that puts some of our kids behind where we would like and need them to be. We've not been able to address that to the level that we would like, and that's resource-driven. So with my fix to that, it would be to commit resources to that. Now, that becomes a tug-of-war because those resources are already doing something else. We have a balanced budget, as most people know, so that's going to be a trade-off of sorts, and that's a discussion that the board and the admin folks can engage in, but that's an area that I would, I'd like to see us emphasize a little stronger, to see if we can close some of the gaps that COVID dealt us.
Thank you, Joe. Annette Smith, name an area that the district has not necessarily done a good or respectable job, and what would you do to improve it?
So I'm going to echo something Joe just said, in that I think every single person who's engaged in this school district, from the board to everybody, bus driver, everybody, has done a really good job. There's always room for improvement, and I'm going to go back to funding. There's a lot of work to be done to build out a sustainable funding model that can work not just year by year, we're geared out, but over the long term for the district.
Thank you. Dan Hibbert, name an area that the district has not necessarily done a good or respectable job, and what would you do to improve upon it?
Well, I think we haven't held the line on spending well enough. I think we haven't held people accountable for low scores on DPI report cards, and frankly, my concern with the DPI report card is that we're not showing improvement over time. How we can improve, I would say hold people accountable, but that's not, but I want you to hear, I'm not trying to blame someone. I think we hold people accountable by asking them, what resources do you need to achieve a better goal in English language arts and math, and increase those DPI scores, so.
Thank you. This next question, we will start with you, Joe, if we could. Shared services with other school districts is a wave that we're seeing roll out across the state. Are there areas that you believe there's opportunities for the Milton School District to pursue shared services with other area districts?
Absolutely, Rich, and one of the things that I've learned over the time on the board is that if we're going to continue to offer and expand offerings, ideally, to our kids, and this is at the upper grade levels to some degree, we become contingent on specialists providing those services. Foreign languages comes to mind. If we want to offer those kids those opportunities, we may have, you know, in my world, we offered, my day back in high school, we offered, you know, French and Spanish and Latin, so I'm a little archaic there, but as those offerings change, you know, we may have to employ a teacher, but there may not be the number of students that would support that full-time staff member, such that ideally, and particularly with some virtual offerings, we would be able to partner with a neighbor district and provide those services and share the costs and share the benefit that that person could provide us.
Thank you. Annette Smith, the same question. Shared services with other school districts is becoming something that's emerging across the state. Are there areas that you see there's opportunities for the Milton School District to pursue those services activities?
I agree with Joe that there's opportunities to get students access to maybe programs or courses they could not receive otherwise, and you can use technology for that. There also might be opportunities in the area of purchasing or in the area of sharing resources, so there are different ways we can look at that, right? Maybe bus and contracts, or there's all different kinds of ways you can think about that, and it just opens up doors to other ways to think about things.
Thank you. Dan Hibbert, shared services with other school districts is becoming a wave of the future force of school districts across the state. Do you see opportunities for the Milton School District to pursue something along that lines with other districts in the area?
Possibly. I think we've heard some good ideas already, so I think we just need to, if an idea comes up, we just need to vet it very well. That's all.
Thank you. Jen Johns, shared services with other school districts is the wave of where we're seeing schools have in the future. Do you see opportunities for the Milton School District to pursue shared services with other districts?
Yeah, again, obviously, I think the rest of the panel really covered the answer to that question, certainly. I'm all about partnering. I'm all about partnerships, and I'm certainly all about collaboration, and it's really great to be good neighbors. So again, if other school districts within Rock County or within the Badger Conference, if we can find ways to collaborate and partner, that's fantastic.
Thank you. The next round of questions, we'll start with you, Annette. What of any value do you place on the Department of Public Instruction's school report card? Should it be a key metric to assess performance within our schools? Or are there other measures that should be considered as well?
I think the report card is one piece of the achievement puzzle. You know, not all kids are test takers, not all kids are musicians, not all kids. So it's one piece of what we should look at for achievement. But there are many other pieces that we need to look at that whole child and what it is that their, where their talents lie. And so, in looking at how the district is doing, yes, absolutely. People look at that and decide, is Milton the district we want to move to? Is this the place we want to live? But they also want to know that their child is going to have the opportunity and the ability to be measured on their musical talent or their sports talent or their language talents. And so you really have to give that student that opportunity and to judge a district based on that whole child's opportunity.
Thank you, Annette. Dan Hibbert, what of any value do you place on the Department of Public Instruction's school report cards? And should it be used as the key metric to assess student performance? Or are there other measures that are of importance as well?
I think the report card, as designed, provides a pretty good apples-to-apples comparison of districts around the state. You know, there are, I'm not sure if there are other metrics. I'm not sure it matters so much if your particular student is good at math or music or some other skill. But it does let us know what districts are doing really well and what districts could maybe optimize things a little bit more. So, you know, going back to partnerships, I think it would be a good practice to look at the top-performing districts on that report card and going and having a conversation with the board members and the superintendent and ask them what their keys to success are, so.
Thanks, Jen. Jen Jones, the same question. What of any value do you place on the Department of Public Instruction's school report cards? And should it be used as the key metric, or are there other metrics that ought to be brought into consideration assessing performance?
So I understand DPIs, report card is a unit of measurement, and it is standard, which does make sense, right? The state of Wisconsin has to have a standardized way of measuring. There are way more opportunities out there to measure our students, especially at different grade levels. And again, I think the district is utilizing new screening tools that is helping our teachers way more than just one particular assessment. And I think it's just like in any other job, we're not only assessed really in one testing area, right? So I'm not overly -- the DPI score is certainly valuable. I don't think it's gospel at all, and I agree with, and I just, again, there's, it is much more, it's much broader than one test.
Thank you, Jen. Joe Martin, what of any value do you place on the Department of Public Instruction's school report cards? Should it be the key metric in assessing student performance, or are there other measures that are of importance as well?
Okay, so I would place some value on it, but it would be limited. And as you dive deeply into it and figure out how that it's calculated, you know, we as human beings, we want easy numbers to compare entities against each other, in this case, school districts, et cetera. You have to understand that that calculation is subtly different for every school district. So direct number comparisons across districts is somewhat valuable, but you have to be very, very guarded in that. We use it in this district as a piece of our discussion when we're talking about achievement and particularly areas to focus on for improvement. So it has some value, but it does not drive the discussion all the time. It is only a piece of the different ways that we can measure both our successes and our areas to improve.
Thank you. This next round of questions, we will begin with you, Dan. In discussions across the region with other administrators and leaders, the issue of parent accountability comes often as a key indicator of success within these schools. How would you promote, as a member of the school board, parent accountability for their students and how they perform?
Well, it's gonna be a pretty tough job for the teacher if kids show up at school not clean, not dressed well, and not fed. Just a whole host of downstream issues from that. So we want parents to be involved, we want parents to understand issues like aces, adverse childhood experiences, so that we can minimize those, so we can give students every opportunity to succeed. The, on the other side of that, if we want parental accountability, we need to reject some extremism, especially at the federal level. We had a national group that, I believe it was the NEA, lobbied the Biden administration to classify some parent groups as terrorists and examine them as terrorists. I think we need to be very careful. Do we want parental accountability, or do we want, what are we actually asking of parents? Are we, do we want their important or not?
Thank you. It's just Jen next. The question is parental accountability. The issue of parental accountability comes up in that formula of performance measures continuously in conversations across the state. What's the role of, your role as a board member to hold parents accountable for the performance of their students?
So I think, again, it's communication. It just boils down to communication. And, you know, how is it that we're reaching our parents and kind of sending the message as to what's really important for their family and what's important for the student when they show up each day in the classroom? And so I also, I understand as a parent, you know, the teachers can't control a lot of what is happening in the household, right? So I think it's still just about communication and making sure that things are being relayed back to home if a student is having issues in the classroom, or again, if their performance is, you know, if they're struggling. Again, it's really about how the parent and the staff member, the teacher, can work together.
Thank you. Joe Martin, parental accountability, your role as a school board member in helping to ensure parents are accountable for the performance of their students?
Yeah, I think the easiest piece to answer that is to engage them. And I think, first of all, I would recognize that the challenges of a parent today are probably a little different than what I faced as a parent a number of years ago. We don't spend any time in the classroom as board members, but we have a direct link to all of our people that are in those classrooms, and that's probably the most direct interaction with parents that we get, is that classroom teacher. And so the challenges that that student has, and whether those are addressable by the parent or not, we've always considered this a partnership, you know, that bright little student that walks into those classrooms, they need some parent accountability and support, of course, but they need the support that we can engage and bring to the table. And that's going to differ for all those students. So we have to be tuned into that and, to the degree that we can, bring resources to bear that help that classroom teacher bridge that gap for that particular student.
Thank you, Joe. Annette Smith, parental accountability, and how do you bring it home?
I'm just gonna start with, I really am struggling with the term parental accountability. Parents are the partner in their children's education. Parents are their first educator. And so to say to them, you're accountable, just feels odd to me. So I'm just gonna start with that as the groundwork, because they're your partner. They, parents want what's best for their kids. They may not agree with you on what's best, and that's where you start having those communications, what Joe just talked about. You work with them to identify what is best. Not all parents have the ability to send a kid to school with a warm breakfast. So what do we do to help with that? How do we partner with them to find good solutions? Not all parents are home when the kids get home from school. They can't be. And so how do we partner with them to find the best solutions for that student? So again, to me, I'm gonna go back to communication and partnerships.
I think this represents a good point in the program to take a little bit of a breather. And we'll collect any questions that folks from the audience have prepared or anything that's come in from our online listeners. And welcome back. After the grueling first 45 minutes, everybody decided they would come back and join us again, so that's a positive thing. We're gonna have a couple of questions out of the audience, and then I think we're gonna shift gears and we'll go to closing comments from each of you, so if that's okay. We're just gonna move this thing along a little bit. The questions from the audience, I'll do my best to capture the entire, the spirit of what's there. And, by the way, thank you for the excellent internship. They still teach cursive somewhere. It's great. I am impressed. It was mentioned earlier about the learning gap caused by COVID. If the district were to face another challenge such as this, what would you do? What would you do the same, or what would you do differently in terms of your approach to engaging community and solutions to those challenges? And let's start this one with Jen.
Well, for the record, I hope we don't ever have to go through that again.
Yes.
So, yeah, I think the district handled the pandemic really well. They were moving through each day. It was an unknown. And so I would, as a board member, I would highly recommend they do exactly what they did, because it did keep our students safe and it kept our staff safe. I definitely think that if there were another pandemic, we would try to get our students, at least part of our student body, back earlier in a pandemic, because again, that face-to-face and in the classroom with a teacher is crucial. So that would be my suggestion, if, God willing, it doesn't happen again.
Thank you, Jen. Joe, same question. It was mentioned earlier about the learning gap caused by COVID. If the district were to face another challenge such as this, what would you do the same and what would you do differently?
Yeah, and so I think I'm the reason that that phrase got thrown out there, and it's one of the things that's in the back of our minds all the time. If you think about education, it's a lifelong process, of course. We concentrate it, if you will, on school-aged children. So any kind of a gap that's created, now, the pandemic caused a gap, but there might be something else that would cause a gap. And I would opine that mental health of our students is gonna be tugging at that gap a little bit. So our ability to address that, now, we addressed the not-in-the-classroom gap during COVID as well as we could, as Jen mentioned. One of the real resources at our disposal was our technology deliverance, because every student in our district had a technology device to access content and to interact and whatnot. So the parallel to that would be, and we're currently doing, is to pour some resources into mental health of our students such that when they show up in the classroom, they are able to learn and to interact and engage and absorb the curriculum that we're providing.
Thank you, Joe. Annette Smith, it was mentioned earlier about the learning gap caused by COVID. If the district were to face another challenge such as this, what would you do the same and what would you do differently?
So I don't think that's an easy one to answer, because whatever happens next is not gonna be like what just happened. It's always something different, and you always have to try to figure out what's the best solution. Just like Joe talked about, right now, it's mental health. In two or three years, I can't predict, right, what that's gonna look like. And so I'm gonna fall back on communicate clearly, make the decision that's in the best interest of the children in the district, that you can with the information you have at that particular moment.
Thank you, Annette. Dan Hibbert, same question. It was mentioned earlier about the learning gap caused by COVID. If the district were to face another such challenge, what would you have done the same? What would you have done differently?
You know, I'm not running for school board because of COVID. But one of the reasons I am running is because throughout all of that, I've never heard a school board member at any level, I've never heard an expert at any level, come out and tell the public, I'm sorry for being so wrong about COVID. There was hardly any impact on kids, except when we removed them from their peers, they had a huge, teenagers co-regulate. Kids co-regulate when they're in their peer groups. And yeah, so the impact on mental health, the learning loss, it was, we've learned too much to go back to what we had tried in the past. If there is another thing like COVID, I hope there never is. We should put everyone, keep doing the same thing, day in and day out, don't change anything. Keep the students in the classroom, keep them where they are with their peers, and maybe make everyone wash their hands once an hour or something. But, oh, and one of the things we need to do is work on our ventilation systems a little more, so.
Very good. Thank you. This next question, again, is from the audience, and it, we will start this one with Joe. I got it right this time. Based on evidence you have reviewed, what are the top three factors that impact student achievement and success?
Okay. I think the first one that comes to mind is they need to be in the classroom. Most of us have alluded to the idea that, while we can offer things virtually to kids, that does not replace in-classroom learning. So whatever we can do to get the kids in the classroom would be the first thing that comes to mind. And then, here again, an earlier comment I made was to engage the parents, because there are things pulling at those kids outside of the school day that are unique for every kid. And the better understanding we have of that, I think, not that we can solve all of those issues either, some of them are societal and social, but to the degree we can understand the challenges those kids are coming out of and then fix what we can and address them in that manner, I think, helps us engage them the best we can.
Thank you, Joe. Annette Smith, based on evidence you've reviewed, what are the top three factors that impact student achievement and success?
Well, I'm gonna start with the first one, and that affects every person, and that's having a safe environment. That you have a place that you can be safe and feel secure, so that you can take on the learning environment. It also, you need to be, have health. You need to have, you know, food and all that leads into that safety, a safe environment. And then, opportunity. What are the opportunities you have? How can you explore those opportunities in that safe environment? And after 30-some years of education, the third one has like totally slipped out of my brain. I was like trying to write them down. I was like, I know these. I've studied this, and I have lost the third one. Sorry.
It's okay. Dan Hibbert, based on the evidence you've reviewed, what are the top three factors that impact student achievement and success?
Parental involvement would be key. But I think one of the bigger things is having hope. Hope that you can improve your situation, hope that you can achieve greater than your parents did, greater than your grandparents did. And as part of that, the third thing, is having some clear goals. Unfortunately, it's just not a part of our education system to bring in kids from when they're starting off high school and say, where do you want to end up in five years? And actually helping them with a roadmap to build the talent stacks, the skill sets that they need to get there. I think we do a fine job, even in this district, a fine job preparing folks for college, but maybe not, you know, to some extent, into the trades, but we don't sit down necessarily and say, what are the things we need to do to help you succeed? So parental involvement, hope, and having some good goals.
Thank you, Dan. Jen Jones, based on evidence you've reviewed, what are the top three factors that impact student achievement and success?
Yeah, so student achievement and success really does start, again, as it's been mentioned, at home. Right prior, before they even arrive into the school district, it really does start at home. And then I would say, once they're with us, right, it is the resources and the opportunity that the district can provide for every child. And so, again, that matters. And so again, that matters immensely for their achievement, whether they're, again, in second grade or in 10th grade. It's about the resources and the opportunities that we're supplying each and every child. And then I would say the third leg of that stool is high-quality staff. And we have that here in Milton. Student achievement is also based on, again, that teacher, that administrator, the person that's, again, serving them hot lunch. It all matters to that student and how they're going to achieve their academic success.
Thank you. We're going to shift into closing comments. And I want to build on the closing comments with another one of the questions that came from the audience. So somewhere in your closing comments, I'd like you to ruminate a little bit, if you would, about what do you love about public education? But this is your opportunity to make a pitch to the community as to what, you're the choice that needs to be made on April 2nd. And we'll begin this with you, Annette.
Well, first of all, high-quality staff was the third one. Thank you. Thank you for, it's like, oh, how could I have missed that? So I'll just do a, ah, moment. And what do I love about public education? So I'll speak to teaching in the military schools when my husband was stationed overseas and walking down the hallway. And this is also true when I taught in another district here in Wisconsin, and hearing all different kinds of students talking to each other, sometimes in different languages, from different walks of life, from, you know, they're really unique and they're all together in one space. And they get to influence each other and teach each other empathy and compassion. And how do you get along with people who are different from you? And that's something that is really unique to public education. And, and it just makes me smile thinking about it and being in that environment and watching them grow together and learn how to function in society. And so that's what I love about public education. It's about all kids. And I guess in my closing remarks, what I would say is I hope I've been able to share with you the kind of passion I have for public schools and also for what was, what Milton has to offer in terms of quality. And that what I want to do is help to continue to build on those successes and grow those opportunities.
Thank you, Annette. Dan Hibbert, your closing comments.
Well, thanks for being here again tonight. And I want to say, you know, the thing I like about public education is that it does, it is supposed to provide everyone at least an equal playing field to begin life with. And that's, I think a lot of our societal unrest right now is because people don't feel like they have that fair shot. So I'm hoping that we can, I really appreciate civil dialogues like this. I really do. And thank you all for being here. And thanks again for hosting. And I hope I've answered some questions you guys have about me. But I'm looking for your support in April. Thanks.
Thank you, Dan. Jen Jones?
Yeah, so I guess I have enjoyed my four years on the school board. And I have a real deep passion as well for public education. And again, education for all. And I can tell you that I can make some promises, and I made similar promises three years ago. I will be focused on the district's mission. And I will be fiscally accountable and also responsible with taxpayers' dollars. That is very important to me. I will always put the student first, though. And I will make decisions with an open mind. I have not one specific agenda. I never have, I never will, and I never will let politics get in the way of my school board decisions. So again, I also appreciate your vote in April. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Joe Martin? It's your chance to shine.
Well, first of all, thank you for hosting us. It is always enjoyable to talk about school-related things and share that. I can tell you that it has been my pleasure and certainly my privilege to have served on the board for a couple of terms here. I'm anxious to continue doing that. I think folks probably understand, you know, I've tried at length to opine during board meetings and public situations about issues, et cetera. So I think folks probably have an idea of where I'm at. I can tell you that two of the real pleasurable things that come out of this work are the positive feedback we get out of the community, and it is tremendously lopsided, positive versus negative. And I want, I want people to understand that. This is a wonderful community, a wonderful school district. It would be my privilege to continue doing that. And I can tell you, one of the most privileged, one of the most special privileges I've had is to stand on that stage and shake the hands of those kids walking across grabbing that diploma. Because that's the finish line, and that's, that's what we all do. And it is extremely, extremely enjoyable to do that. So thank you for your help and your support.
Thank you all for your candor and your time this evening. The candidates, I'm sure, are going to be sticking around for a few minutes. If you want to visit with them, I'm hopeful that they'll make their time available to you. Thank you, the audience, for taking the time to learn and to listen. There's nothing more important than your right to exercise the vote that you hopefully will take and make on April 2nd. And honestly, the only way it is, is if you work hard to get involved. And you ultimately will make a difference. So I encourage you to get out and vote on April 2nd. Early voting starts next Tuesday, I believe. And with that in mind, everybody have a great rest of the evening. We're going to convene again in about 15 minutes with a conversation with our city council candidates. Stick around. And thank you.